Council meeting, Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jack Perry?
Here.
Jennifer Clark?
Here.
Michael Del Santo?
Present.
Valerie DiPaolo?
Here.
William Deidich?
Here.
James Morelli?
Here.
Tony Morrison?
Here.
Christopher Palmieri?
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky?
Here.
We have a quorum, can we please stand for the prayer in the flag suit?
Heavenly Father, may we consider the people of Southington and always render what is right and just for our citizens. Help us to be compassionate while still seeking what is appropriate for the entire community. Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, we're looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the regular town council meeting, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, approve the minutes of our regularly scheduled meeting from last, uh, two weeks ago.
Second, we have a motion in the second. Chris?
Can I suggest a couple, uh, changes to the minutes?
Sure.
Um, under, under the Public Works report, um, with relation to Russell Road.
What page is that, Chris?
Um, page four. Um, when we're talking about Russell Road, um, it's, it's the second to last paragraph from the bottom. It says he adds that she is calling everyone, including police officers and the chief of police. Um, Ms. Triano, who's the resident on there, um, just wanted that corrected, that she didn't call the police about the repair of the road. Apparently, there's an ongoing speeding issue on the road, that's why, um, the police were involved in that.
I'm sorry, Chris, we can't take, uh, that, that would be ex parte outside of the meeting. What was reported by the Public Works, uh, Chairman is, is his statement. Um, sh- she's free to come give a statement on that at the next meeting, but we can't change the meeting minutes because she wasn't here to actually make those statements.
Okay, I, I have another, um, change too, may be similar, but.
I mean, I, I'll defer to the town attorney, maybe, just.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So, town attorney agrees with that?
All right, on page five, very similar, um, the, the fourth paragraph down, um, the last sentence, he states that he was met with an email stating he is delusional. She said she did say, um, she said the statements were delusional, not that he is delusional. So, again, she just didn't wanna be on record as calling someone delusional, um, so, that's just another suggestion.
Yeah, I would say that that similarly applies.
And then the third one is, we did talk about the, the water, uh, you know, the runoff, and that's not in the minutes at all. So, we did discuss that, I know it, it, I know they're not verbatim, but is there any record we can put in there that the water runway runoff issue was discussed? On, when we talked about Russell Road as well? Cause we did, we, we did talk about that.
Part of the minutes then, Mr. Chair, right?
But it's not, it's not, that's what I'm asking, it's not in here?
Right, but it's part of the minutes, this is just a summary of the min- of the minutes, the recording's there.
Yeah, but, but, in, in here, in, in the meeting minutes, it does not, um, Councilman Chaplinsky asked Councilman Del Santo if water was entering her property. And Councilman Del Santo replied yes, so I think that that should be in there.
Okay.
There was a discussion, and there's nothing with Councilman Chaplinsky in that, that conversation, but there was a conversation.
I think that conversation is well documented in the, uh, the video, right, so, I mean, it's there. I don't think, I think the concept of Russell Road is captured here. Every, uh, thing that was discussed is not meant to be in the meeting minutes, it's not required, um.
Well, I, I.
So, you would like to just state that, that the, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, Jack, I, I'm sorry, but we don't have the actual quotations. You would like to add in that water, uh, coming onto the property of, of Ms. Triano was, uh, was discussed, is that correct?
I'm just saying, the, the runoff issue with water related on people's property was also discussed, I mean, something as simple as that, so it's memorialized. And, and I think it's important because it's water leaving the town's roadway, going onto somebody's property causing damage.
Right, I think I was, I think.
There's a liability aspect, that the town needs to obviously document that.
I think I was, uh, the one who brought that up, where I said that we received the communication, we received the communication, the entire council, that the neighbor of Ms. Triano complained that water was coming up their driveway and was going onto Ms. Triano's property. And we heard from the town manager that there was a dispute between the parties as a result of that, is what we heard. And the town manager is nodding yes, and that, that matter was being handled between the parties. Now, what I had suggested was the apron of the neighbor's par- that apron of the neighbor's, uh, what was said was that water was coming up the apron of the neighbor's, uh, driveway. And that, that may or may not be a town issue, that may be a private issue, and I was originally directing and asking the town manager to look at that. He indicated that they did look at it, and that there was a dispute between the parties that was, uh, being handled amongst themselves. If there's something different, please let me know.
No, it's my understanding that, um, Ms. Triano made a complaint against the neighbor's apron, that it wasn't the current code and specifications. Um, town staff went and spoke with the neighbor, we explained that it doesn't meet the current standard. However, when that, it was built thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years ago, there weren't standards, and the town doesn't require people to jack up their driveways to, to change the standards unless they're gonna do a re- rehabilitation or a remodel of that.
Okay, so, did you find that the town had some liability with that, that we should be fixing?
That's a question of law, but the town, at this point, feels no issue, has noted no reason to take any action on private property.
So, so, just to be clear, all I'm asking for is, we don't need to get into the, all the details, but just a sentence, runoff water in Russell Road was discussed.
That's fine, I, I would be okay with that, runoff water, uh, from Russell Road, um, onto private properties was discussed.
Right, thank you.
Is that okay, Chris?
Yeah, well, and, and just to clarify, there was two different things stated, um, and what I was referring to is when Mr. Del Santo stated that he, you know, he saw town staff out there chipping ice in front of Ms. Triano's home. Mr. Chairman, you then commented, oh, the water's going there, Mr. Del Santo replied yes. So, you're right, the apron was another issue, but the one I was personally, I don't know which one, Chris, was, but that's the one I was thinking of.
Understood, Jack, I'm not, I don't, I don't accurately recall the exact, uh, premise of that discussion, but I, I acknowledge your, uh, your concern. Okay.
And just to be clear, we're gonna.
So, we will add that water from the road coming onto properties, um, was discussed at the last meeting.
I appreciate it.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
No.
You're not okay with it?
No.
No. Jim?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Doesn't mean anything, it's fine.
Well, uh, we're gonna take a vote on the approval of the meeting minutes, so, there, there's a, there's a, we have a, we have a motion to approve it.
Are we still under?
We have, we are, we have a motion that's a second, so, in order for us to, um, to modify the meeting minutes, we would have to get a, uh, the original motioner to agree to modify his motion, and it sounds like he's not willing to do that. Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, what am I missing here? There's an audio recording of this meeting. Video and audio, anybody could watch the entire two and a half, whatever, two hour, hour and a half, whatever it was. We decided a lot, since Linda left with her little machine, which I still don't know how anyone does that thing, we used to get verbatim minutes, cause she used her little machine. We all decided, I don't even know if I was on town council when that started, that we were going to get summary minutes. So, everything said here by Councilman Palmieri and Councilman Perry is in the minutes. Unless there's some Richard Nixon-ish pause in the video or the recording, I didn't listen to it, cause I was here, but I don't understand why that has to be in the summary.
So, that these are the minutes, you're talking about the recording of the video, it's in the recording of the video, it's not in the minutes? So, what I'm saying is.
These are summary minutes.
But, Mike, all I'm asking for is a summary, I'm not asking for the details. As long as we put in there that it was discussed, then, if someone reading this wants to watch the full video, they know which, which meeting to watch, that's all I'm asking for.
It's just, and it was discussed. Mary, you're contradicting yourself, you said, you said this is a sum- these are the summary minutes, and I'm as- I'm not asking for details, and then now you're asking for two details.
No, I want a summary.
So, why don't we, why don't we just?
Runoff water and Russell roadway was discussed.
So, we know what you're looking for, the original motion is Mike's, we have a second on it, do you wanna change your motion?
I do not wanna change.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Jack.
Thank you, so, I, I don't see, we're spending more time than it's worth, I don't see what the big issue is of changing it. Obviously, it's a summary, and I, I get where Chris is coming from, people, the residents, look at the meeting minutes, and they don't watch the whole video. And I agree, a summary, but I think that was an important part of the summary, and we're not asking for it to be verbatim. We're just asking for it to be on the record of the official, or the official meeting minutes, which may be summary, not verbatim. But at, at what point, why do you have meeting minutes then? I think it's all for transparency, and I would like to see it added for that reason.
Okay. Let's, uh.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
If, if, um, Dr. Triano came to the meeting and asked for the changes, would, would we make them?
I don't think so.
Well.
Just, I'm just out of curiosity.
I don't think so, I think it would be based on, it would be based on what occurred in that meeting, that, that would be a part of this meeting if they came and made the statement.
And then it would be the, it would be in the recording for the meeting that she comes to?
Yes.
And, uh, and Val, I would suspect that since we're discussing this here, it's probably gonna be in the, you know, referred to in this meeting minutes as well, so, I think there's gonna be some record of it, there's gonna be plenty of record out of, of it if the original motioner, uh, does not want to change his motion, okay? Any, uh, anything else before we call the roll?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, here we have, this is why our meetings go on till ten o'clock at night.
That's it. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll?
Perry?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo?
No.
Deidich?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Oh.
Chaplinsky?
Yes, the motion passes six to three, moving on to item three, presentation by Bread for Life Director, Missy Cipriano. Missy, welcome and thanks for coming.
How are you?
Very good, thanks.
Yes, I gotta list this, right? I won't make it last too long, I promise. Thank you guys for.
Ten o'clock is okay with me.
No, no, no. Not for me, not today, thank you guys for having me tonight, really appreciate it, I was gonna bring a slideshow, but I figure I just talked for about five minutes. So, you guys know what's going on in our town and what Bread for Life is doing, and our wonderful community. Many of you guys know, we've been serving for forty years here in our town of Southington. We've grown in the last fifteen years, far beyond anybody would ever thought, but the need is greater. You know, it's changed over the last many years, and I wanted to present to the council some of how these needs changed and how we've met them with collaboration, with the work and conjunction with community services and, um, Board of Education, this summer, serving five thousand meals to our students in our community. That was a great collaboration, Board of Education, um, South Central Health Department. I think there were four different teams that came out and volunteered their time to play sports and kickball, basketball. A robotics team just killed it, so, in about eight years with the little kids that were there, six years or so, you're gonna have a really large robotics team in town. You're gonna have a problem, cause every kid wanted to do it. Um, the community as itself is facing, uh, food insecurity issue, not like any other town, right? It's not extreme, it's, it's not a Bridgeport, it's not a Waterbury issue, but the issues still exist. And it's like, I mean, I had said to share with Chip one day, I said, you know, our town is so beautiful, right? We have this beautiful tapestry, everything, I mean, uh, our open space, everything we do as a community is lovely. But with any tapestry, you turn it over, and there's knots, and there's little holes you can't see from the other side. And those are the things that we deal with at Bread for Life, at Community Services, at Southington Housing Authority, it just doesn't get talked about a lot. You know, and you don't really know, as you did in the past, who these individuals are that are in need. So, I wanted to just really highlight something that we've been daddying for over the last seven years, you know, before COVID and after. Now, some of these seniors that we serve now, eighty-five seniors, we serve meals and deliver to in our community. Started nine years ago, we were only delivering to thirty-one, when I started nine years ago at Bread for Life. So, we're up to eighty-five meals, it's about a thirty-three mile radius drive that we do throughout the town, and we do all this at no charge to our seniors. But these are the same seniors that purchased their home, and they paid for, they live there, many of their loved ones are gone. And the amount their mortgage was, is what they pay on taxes, so that leaves them a little tighter when it comes to buying food. They don't drive anymore, because it's not safe on the roads, even though they may have their car, you know, it's a little busier out there, I don't even like to drive, so, um, but that's a different look. The families that we serve this summer, they're not families of a single mom only, they're families of seven, mom and dad, five kids. Mom works throughout the year, takes the summer off, so, their lives are breaking their income. It's not only the families that have had extreme loss, you know, whether it's death, divorce, job loss. These are the families in our community that are hardworking. Some of the folks that we serve are people you see at local grocery stores, our delis, and they're working every day, and they live in their car still because of a nu- uh, numerous reasons, you know, that I can't get in publicly, but it wasn't all their fault, you know, some things just happen. Somebody's bottom is a little lower than the next person's bottom. These are the issues and things that we're dealing with at Bread for Life, and we decided this year to do a little campaign to talk about how hunger is more than food. You know, how it is that it's not just the addict or the person with mental health issues that are going through these food insecurity issues. It's a myriad of reasons why families can't pay for the food they once did and, and, you know, be home to cook a home-cooked meal, because things are tighter. And so, it makes us work a little harder, be a little bit more creative, which we are, you know, we receive, as you well know, no funds from the town or the state or the federal government. We do it all by two fundraisers, by annual campaign, and writing grants probably six months out of the year. And, um, private funders have supplied all we've needed throughout these years of Bread for Life. Foundations in our community, like the DiPaolo Foundation, the Calvinist Foundation, always come in and clutch when we need something to help move the dial a little bit further, and we're really appreciative about that. Our collaborative growth is continuing to grow with what we do at Calendar House, I think Alex was there, um, I don't know who came with Alex, was it Jim? He came and saw what we're doing, helping out Calendar House in their little gap, and all the seniors are really enjoying it, it's twenty-five seniors twice a week. And now, we're transitioning them to come to Bread for Life, you know, they had a stigma, so Bread for Life is just for those people, they're not for us. Until they got to Bread for Life and saw what a beautiful building it was, and that we're not just putting some slop on anybody's fa- plate, you know, we're doing the same, um, you know, chicken corn on blue that we serve them at Calendar House. And so, they started coming, being part of the community, and what's great about this is this generational gap that's happening. So, our seniors at Calendar House are coming to Bread for Life, and we have some younger individuals that have lost their mother and father, that they don't have any siblings due to other things. And now, they're having communications, cause these folks were born and raised in this town, they're not just the transients that come in that we redirect. These are people who unfortunately got lost in the shuffle throughout the years that are still here. So, if you would entertain me for one minute, as Bread, um, Bread for Life is a beacon of hope. There was a family in town that I told them I would completely keep their name out of it, but they were born and raised here, raised their kids here. And fortunately, one of their loved ones came upon some really bad times that they never expected, and they were afraid to ask for help. And why I wanna share this, is many of our people in our communities are afraid to ask for help. The moms that came to summer lunch said, I would have never took this meal if it didn't go through the Board of Ed, and you helped us tremendously, and now, we're good. I knew my kids were fed, I know they got time with other, uh, children, and this made a difference. So, this letter states, to whom it may concern, with the current realities of homelessness, hunger, and unaffordable groceries, Bread for Life in Southington is addressing these basic needs. Bread for Life is a sanctuary for those experiencing unexpected hardships. We in Southington are very fortunate to have this organization daily to provide weekly meals to our growing number of residents in need. It is amazing to discover that Bread for Life functions as an organization independent from the town. Recently, we were confronted with a family member who was unemployed, living out of his car, and lacking a daily meal. Pride, embarrassment, and on a small social security stipend kept him from moving forward in a town in which he grew up in. While a search for public housing was underway, we introduced him to the staff for Bread for Life. That introduction changed and made an impact on his self-esteem and confidence. They treated him with dignity, respect, and kindness. We are grateful to Bread for Life for being there for our family members, who is now living independently in public housing with SNAP benefits. The helping hand from Bread for Life gave him a break from his rut he was in, therefore allowing him to think and act more clearly in believing that he is really still a part of the Southington community. Our Southington neighbors need to realize the gym we have here in town managed and run by angels, is what she called us, but, um, I wanted to share that. And lastly, invite each and every one of you, come down, Monday through Friday, we're there, serve lunch with us, sit and have a coffee with somebody we serve. Wednesday night, dinner starts at five o'clock, you don't have to call me, you guys just come down. These are registered voters, they wanna see you, you need to see them, hear and talk to them, because it makes a difference, we're one community, and we do this together. And so, I thank you for your time, and as a sidebar, Soup Night's coming up, um, it's our, one of the largest, largest, everybody seems to love it, Jack likes it. Uh, here's the flyers for it, I have bracelets that talks about how, you know what, hunger is more than food, it simply is. If we just simply fed someone, a monkey could do that, no offense, we wouldn't be going anywhere, we wouldn't be growing anyone. We are working on more than food and emotional addiction, everything that we're doing at Bread for Life in conjunction, collaboration, whenever anybody in this town is really helping move people, and that's why I wanted to read that letter, thank you guys for your time tonight. If I have any questions, I'll be willing to ask anything.
Maybe you could just, uh, give the details for the minutes and for those who might be watching about Soup Night?
Uh, Soup Night is October fifteenth, it's at the Southington High School Auditorium, five o'clock to seven o'clock, it's a mad rush. Uh, we have about sixteen different restaurants in our town that supplies five gallon bucket of soup, can't tell you the flavors, um, but we will that night. You pay ten dollars at the door for adults, children under six get in for free, and it's a wonderful night of just, everything was donated, again, community. Everything's donated, the time is donated, it's an amazing event, it's crazy for me, cause I plan it for six months, but it's amazing for everybody else. But come down, and I'd love to see you guys.
Can you give the flyer for the minutes?
Yeah, this is, I'm gonna give you guys this, or, your bracelets are in it for you guys, so you guys could take these for sure.
Mike's, Mike wants to go. That's okay, uh, Missy, two things, number one, it cannot be understated, the help that you gave the Calendar House. Um, we've talked about it on the dais here, it's just an amazing, amazing thing you did for our seniors. And for two organizations like the Calendar House and Bread for Life working together, it's just, um, unbelievable, unbelievable. We thank you very much for all the help you gave, and hopefully, we run, we don't run into the problem where you have to do it, it's great that you're still doing it. And it's great that some of the members of the Calendar House are now gone, going down to Bread, Bread for Life, and chicken corn on blue, blue is one of my favorites, so, let me know when you're serving that. Number two, mom and I are both disappointed, there was no bread this year. Where's the bread? They make bread in the summertime, and it starts at eleven o'clock, two hours, eleven to one, they sell out of it, so I'm there at eleven oh one, it's still hot, and they make this butter, and it's cheap, and it's delicious, and.
And that was with clients.
I eat the whole loaf.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We cut it open, not me, but my, myself and my boys, my wife, and my mom has her own loaf, and we eat a lot of it, so, uh, thank you very much for everything you do. And like I said, I just wanted to really, um, drill home about the, the assistance you gave to our Calendar House, we really do appreciate the work that you do for this town.
Thank you, we really love doing Calendar House, it's an amazing, amazing, amazing trip down there, I love it, your students come in, and I usually know most of them, and we have a good, we could have a good time. And the bread is coming for a short time at Christmas, I'll keep you posted, all right?
I'm on the website, so.
It's our honey butter with our honey from our beehives, you know, so it's a, it's a special, a special thing.
No one go before me, though. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, Missy, you stated that, are you guys, so, I thought I saw online that you guys are only doing the tickets online this year.
Weird.
Okay, cause you, I think you mentioned the at the door, when you were talking.
No, please, scratch that, we are not selling tickets at the door, if I said that, I apologize, no, it's only tickets online.
Yeah, and four hundred.
Four hundred tickets.
You guys always, always sell out?
We're at a hun- we got a hundred and ten left as of this morning, so, you know, we're still good, it's a month out, so we still got some time. Everybody waits, fifty people wait to the very last day, because they wanna know if it's raining or not, is it worth going out in the rain for soup? I know how people think, so, but, um, and then, so, we always have some, but it'd be online, online will stay open until three, so, you know, you'll get there for five if it's not raining.
I think that's different this year, cause some years you've done it at the door.
Yeah.
So, I just don't want people showing up.
I don't want them showing up either, but you know, we're kinda nice, we'll let you in anyway, you know?
Thank you.
Anybody else, Val?
Um, so, I just, I did wanna mention about the Calendar Houses as well, are there discussions, if, if the Calendar House does not receive federal funding again? That was, Alex, are there discussions?
So.
In case that happens?
As of now, we haven't been notified any of the funding's changed, um, I will absolutely work with Missy if we have an issue. I don't want, um, I don't think it's fair that Bread for Life fronts higher cost for itself, so, we'll work on grants, we'll work on whatever we can to, to support the mission. But I can tell you, and I've had many conversations with Missy in the past, she is adamant, and she's told me, and her board has told me, uh, they will never take a red cent from the town. They don't want the town's fingers in their business, so, uh, we'll work with them, but.
Figure it out, and, and I just, um, I just wanna say, Missy, you know, I, I've served there, I've, I've actually taught yoga classes to their clients, and I get out of it more than I, I, they, maybe they get out of it, it's, um, you know, it is great to see, it's great to see how it's grown, and it's great to see that you're working on not only the food insecurity, but all the other issues that go along with it, and, um, yeah, it's, thank you, for all the work you do.
Thank you, you know, it's really huge, and I don't wanna be misleading, misleading, but I don't wanna miss this opportunity, I replied for a grant. You know, mental health is an issue, we don't wanna talk about it, we do wanna talk about it, you find this pedal of the road, but with many of our folks, they're on state insurance. And if you know anything about state insurance, getting a psychiatrist or a therapy session is a long wait. And they find one, they meet once, and then that one's gone, because of the way the payment runs, you know, everybody wants to get paid, which they should. Um, so I was able to write a grant to work with a therapist in town, Dave Persips. I don't know if you guys know Dave from banking counseling, where, um, right in, uh, where's his office, Alex?
North Main?
Yes, in North Main Street. So he's right in town. So he's going to be doing a nine-week group session with our clients at Bread for Life, helping them to develop some cognitive behavior, you know, tools that they would get, you know, in a personal counseling session, but as a group. So the grant will cover his fee as a counselor to come in and have a private session for ten weeks. Again, you know what, the little things that we can do to collaborate and help him as a business person in our community, and he has a heart for helping those. And he's a vet, he's a Purple Heart vet. And I really, Alex got to meet and talk to him. I introduced him. And so he's humming and helping us too. You know, the town is, you know, it's unbelievable what we can do when we work together. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to ask, Missy? Okay, well, you know, we've known each other a long time, Missy, and I would be remiss if I didn't, um, thank you as well. You know, for somebody who's had a daughter, uh, that you've worked with and volunteered at Bread for Life and for Bread for Life. I appreciate all that you all are doing. And of course, as a person who's had, um, who's had needs with, you know, family members who also go to Bread for Life. Um, your, my heart is with you guys always, and we'll do whatever I can to support you. So thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Missy.
Okay. Why don't we move on to item four, councilperson communications? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple.
Yes.
So, um, I have two items. I wanted to let everyone know that uh, the leading ladies luncheon is coming up on, um, Friday, October seventeenth. And the twenty twenty-five leading lady is Liz Schubert. And, um, I, I'm sure many of you know Liz. And she is just, um, she's just extraordinary in the work that she does, um, you know, with the, the Veterans Committee, uh, the Dementia Positive Initiative, um, all kinds. I, I see her on every committee and, um, so it just came out that she's the leading lady for twenty twenty-five. So if you, if you would like to attend, you need any information, let me know. I can, um, give you the information for tickets, but just a big congratulations.
What a great choice.
It is a great choice. It's a wonderful choice. And I know the council, we had received an email uh, from the Orchard Valley Garden Club. And, and I thought that this was, uh, very interesting. So tomorrow morning at ten AM, they meet at the American Legion Hall. They are having a presentation about Sustainable Connecticut. And, um, that's an organization that supports towns and municipalities as far as sustainable programs relating to health and wellness, uh, climate issues, housing, transportation, uh, land ownership and, and things like that. And so they had sent us an invitation to the council. Um, I'm not able to be there. I, I let them know, but if there's anybody interested, I, I think it could be a really nice presentation. That's, uh, tomorrow morning at the American Legion Hall. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Val. Jen?
Yes, so we had our, um, community workshop for the P O C D on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, so it was a drop-in style meeting for our community to come, um, and learn what the P O C D is, which is the Plan of Conservation and Development, and what the process is, um, some of the big takeaways from the survey that, um, we had six hundred and fifty-five residents complete. And, um, they were able to go through stations with the consultants and, um, learn about demographics that were interesting. Did you know that in ten years, Southington's population is somewhat unchanged at forty-three thousand, or, uh, forty-two thousand five hundred? So that was an interesting takeaway and much, much more. So, um, the survey results are online and you can go, um, through them. Uh, we also had activities that I, I found, um, fun, which were postcards from the future. You could write a postcard and what you see in the future of Southington. Uh, and then we also had a map where people could, one of the concerns that came out was, um, traffic and, and some sidewalks, so, and more bike lanes. So there was a map where you could kind of indicate where you kind of saw, um, saw things go there. So our next meeting is, um, in October and we're gonna concentrate on, uh, visions and goals and strategies. So some of the shared values and major themes that came out of the survey and the community feedback.
Awesome. Any questions for Jen on the P O C D? Mike?
Just a comment for Jen. I was there, um, and what else has changed a lot in the last ten years is technology has been improved and enhanced. So a lot of it was you scan your phone and, uh, just invaluable information. Good stuff, really good stuff.
Thank you for, for, um, Councilman Del Santo coming and also Councilman Palmeri. Uh, thank, thank you for taking the time to come. And, and it was great to see community leaders come out, um, and kind of learn about the process. It was really cool.
But, I mean, we did it ten years ago and it was a lot of, you know, writing and stickies. This year you didn't need that because the technology is there and, and we use the cell phones, but the information on there was just so good. And things, a lot of things I didn't know, like, you know, the population and roads and all that good stuff.
Jen, you're, you're continuing to take technology from the Technology Subcommittee and even going further with it in the Subcommittee, so that's great. Good job.
Yes, a lot of enhancements this year.
Excellent.
Very proud of that.
Chris?
I just want to also comment, as Jen said, I attended. Jen, I want to thank you. It was well organized. The information was easily presentable. Just fantastic job with the whole presentation, so, um, and, and the way it was interactive. And it wasn't, um, like this type of meeting where it's intimidating maybe for residents to come out, so thank you and good job.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, yeah. I was hoping that would be.
One, one thing that I saw actually on that board you mentioned, that I'm wondering if we can do something similar, maybe more immediate. You probably all saw between the Apollo and the Calendar House, they added this summer, those, um, the, the crosswalk beacons. So one of the comments on that board you mentioned said, between Deronowski and the Southington Library. And we, we know all the time that each other use each, those parking lots. So I'm wondering if we can maybe look to do that sooner rather than later, because that is a big crossing area, you know? So I'm not even sure where the funding came from to do it. Um, I think it initiated from staff at the Calendar House that, that asked for the need. If we can do something similar.
The police chief has some, the police chief writes grants for those all the time. Are you talking about the speed limit signs or the actual crosswalk?
The new crosswalk.
They haven't painted the crosswalk yet. It's, it's chalked, right? It's, it's.
The one by the Apollo?
Yeah.
I thought it's painted.
As of this weekend, it hadn't yet been painted, but it's, uh, sketched on the ground. It's still waiting for final. But you're talking about the beacons, which were just installed a few weeks ago.
And I'm thinking, maybe, again, that was right on the board that you mentioned. Someone suggested that, so maybe that's something.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, one of the great things, because in the survey, sometimes the comic comments are a little generic, so you're wondering, okay, where, where exactly are we talking about? And so them bringing that board to pinpoint was so helpful. Yeah, it was, it was really great.
Great, thank you. Anybody else for councilperson communications? Chris, yeah?
Non-related things. Uh, first of all, um, we should be hearing, I reached out to Congressman Larson's office, connected with them about the Churchill. We should be hearing probably this week back from their office. They'll probably be sending us some type of written correspondence. So just thank you to Congressman Larson for looking into that for us. Hopefully, again, we'll hear this week.
It's a mailbox, Chris.
The mailbox issue, uh, yeah. Winchester Estates. Uh, Berlin Street, Alex, I don't know if you can give the residents, there, there's a, on Berlin Street, there's a big, um, sign that tells people the road's gonna be closed and it's, we're in that window. And do you have any update on Berlin Street? I think maybe residents would appreciate.
So today's the first day that they are mobilizing, shutting streets down. The police are out all day with the contractors. Um, town website has it front and center. All the town Facebook pages from mine to Highway Parks, Police Department have all the information on it. It's gonna be a very, very difficult few months. The residents in that area are gonna, they're gonna have some pain. But the work, the water department has to get it done. Department of Transportation has oversight those. Most of those are state roads. So they had the final say on the traffic patterns and the time that we're working. We're actually working a little bit earlier. We're allowing them to mobilize before seven o'clock because it's a state road. And the state said, "We want this done at this time," so, um, we're working as best we can. If people have concerns who live in the area, uh, they're free to call me or call the police department as well.
So just a couple of things. I'm wondering if we can put something right on the homepage of the website. It's such a main road.
It, it is.
Okay, and then also could you do, maybe use a robocall system to notify at least residents in that area of any updates? You know, I just, I just think that would go a long way and it's quick, easy.
Yeah, we can use it.
Yeah.
I think the police chief has the ability to do that.
To do that, absolutely, yeah.
And can I just comment on, uh, on Berlin? Alex, um, we have, obviously local traffic is gonna be allowed. If you live in the area, they're gonna have pass, safe passage for people who live in the area for businesses. There are a few businesses. We have Family Pizza, the old Berkeley Market, you know, there's, uh, a liquor store. There's a few, there's a, a hair cutting. So there are a few of these. Can we please ensure that at both ends of any road shutdown that affects a business, that we also have business open? We have to allow people to get to the businesses. So local traffic should include the ability to go to any one of those businesses. And we need to have the blue, uh, business open like we did in Plankville Center for, uh, for those areas. And if we need to get some for each, there's only, you know, half a dozen businesses at the most. You know, the, uh, the yard signs that they can also put up that says, "We're open during construction."
So I'll request the water department to get those out tomorrow. If they don't, I'll have the town just, just do it. Because I don't want to wait. It's not our project, but we'll, we'll handle it.
Yeah, I mean, even if we have to do it temporarily until somebody else gets a replacement up there, uh, you know, we have to make provisions for the residents who live there and make provisions for the businesses that live there.
And all those businesses are accessible. Everything's accessible.
Correct.
Just let the police officer know that you are gonna pick up a pizza or get a coffee.
Perfect, thank you. And I have one more.
Please.
Uh, I, I have a statement that I'd like to read. Over the past year, we've seen a concerning, concerning number of resignations and retirements among our town employees. At our last meeting, a retired employee came forward and spoke publicly about workplace culture and employee morale. Since then, I have received a document listing approximately forty-five employees who have resigned, with at least three additional resignations occurring since that list was completed. I have also learned that while exit interviews are offered for those who resign, they are not conducted for those who retire. I believe it's in the best practice to seek feedback from all employees who leave town employment regardless of the reason, so that we can better understand patterns and areas for improvement. As a town council, I believe it's our responsibility to ensure that our employees feel valued and supported. For that reason, I am requesting that the town manager have an outside agency conduct an internal audit of our current practices, including how we track resignations and retirements, how we gather feedback, and how we use that information to improve workplace culture and employee retention. Our town employees are our greatest resource and we must take seriously any indication that morale and culture need attention. I believe this step will help us move forward constructively and ensure we are fostering a positive supportive work environment for all who serve our community. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to add an item to tonight's agenda under New Business, Item B, Review of Town Hiring and Retention Practices.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second to add an agenda item. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none?
Just, just briefly, um, just to follow up on that, um, I just want to reiterate that I, I think it's extremely important that, um, when we are notified of, um, issues that could be taken place with our town employees, I think as a council, we need, we need to deal with that. You know, transparently in, in public. And so I, I think it's important that, that we have, have an internal, have this internal audit.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this has been going on all year. And there are reasons for it, reasons which we as a council know full well, to do with bringing in a new town manager and to moving the town forward. Now, why you would bring it up now, six weeks before the election, is an interesting thing, okay? I don't think this has been done honestly. I think it's been done for political electoral purposes. We can talk about this after the election, you know, if, if we consider it so. But I'm not, I'm not in a good mood to actually vote on it tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Chris?
Tony, I'm offended by that statement. We had a retired employee come forward, had the courage to speak publicly at this meeting and share with us some of the concerns. We've, we've also seen how many resignations, retirements we've had very recently. And as I mentioned, since receiving a document, there have been four additional resignations. And that's just in about two weeks. So it's concerning and I think we can't ignore it and we need to look into it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to kind of, you know, rebuttal, um, Councilman Morrison's comments of, you know, reasons, um, moving the town forward. I, I'm gonna be honest, I, I didn't, you know, think hiring a new town manager was going to be, again, moving the town forward. And how I took that is that we are, what, cleansing staff? You know, you, you have two hundred, a little over two hundred employees and we have fifty of them that have either retired early, resigned, and that's how we're moving the town forward? Um, Mr. Morrison can speak on his behalf, but the council, you know, me as a councilperson, that is not what I voted on to go after town employees if that's what that, that comment was. And that's how I took it. Um, and, and I don't, I think it's more political and doing a disservice by not allowing it. If, if we're gonna act transparent and there's nothing to hide, then we would move forward with this. This, this we owe to our, our residents and the individuals that have served our town in a capacity of an, an employee, a resident, and, and I, I just, I'm just a little baffled that, like, why wouldn't we? Like, if, if everything's status quo, let's speed it up so that it's not political. Let's get it done and get this audit done prior, and then you know it's not political. We have enough time. So to state that it's political and it's before election, I think there's enough time to do this audit and to debunk and make it show that it's not political then.
Bill?
Yeah, I mean, Jack, I guess to take the opposite of that. I don't know the reasons behind the list. I mean, I, 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 I've, I've twelve employees. If I was losing people, I would want to know each story. I would, I would care. You should care. But I'd like to know that. And, I mean, if this was maybe done at another meeting with the information in front of us that we got to review, uh, I mean, my guess is some of this information would be privileged. Um, I mean, then it helps you make a decision. I, I just want to know what's on the list. You're referring to a list. I don't, there's reasons associated, right? And I mean, I don't want to go through every person's HR file, but if someone retired in December of last year, they never talked to anyone on the dais and then they come here to speak tonight, I mean, that, that is inherently political. That they're, they're using that reasoning tonight to tell us, you know, they're picking a side, they're saying the town's not managed. I would just want to know what's on the list. And I'd be, I would support the motion if it was in front of us with more time to look at it.
Nothing more than what I said. I requested the town manager provide a list of everyone who retired or resigned in the last calendar year. And all it is, is a list of their names, the date of their resignation. And there's forty-five people on there. And again, as I mentioned, there's been at least three other resignations since they received the list. Paul received a copy of the list as well. All it is, there's nothing, I'm not going into, I'm not talking about any individual member. I'm just asking for a review. And to your point, Bill, it's concerning that I've also asked for how many exit interviews were conducted and only four were conducted. And part of it is because we don't ask that of retirees. So for example, you know, I work for the Board of Education side of the town. Anyone that retires, resignation or retirement, gets an exit interview. The town, the practices right now, only resignations, not retirements. So again, I'm, I'm asking for a review of our current practices to see how we can improve, get feedback from our current and former, uh, um, town employees so we can improve. That's what I'm asking for.
Would you change your motion to a table? I would support a table of this if we could get more information ahead of time to maybe talk about it instead of just, like, can we, can we look at the list and at least get our, compare it to what our current practices are and not waste taxpayer monies on a political goose hunt? I mean, you might be right. I don't know. I just, would you support your motion, change it to a table?
So, so I guess what you're asking is to just put it on maybe next agenda versus this agenda.
I would prefer that. If someone is not running for reelection, I would like to make the right decision for the town, but yeah, I would ask for some time to review it.
But, but I guess, um, what would be, the, the list is only, the list doesn't have, it's a list. It's not, what information do you want? You can, any, any former employees.
Here's what, I mean, Val, here's what I'd like to know.
Well, you can, you can talk with them.
Tony has a copy that you can look right on over your shoulder and see Tony's.
There's a reason why I have a copy.
You can, you can talk to the former employees. and, and find out exactly what, what they feel has been going on, why, why they felt they need, they needed to leave, if that's the case. You know, the li, the list is a list. That's something that's going to be generated. There's resignations, there's retirements, there's terminations. That's, there's been a few exit interviews completed. You know, we, I mean, we had a, a town employee that has worked for the town for twenty-seven years come to a meeting, September eighth, our last meeting. And I think it's, I think we're obligated. I mean, we sit here as a council, we are the oversight of the town. And so, we have an employee that came in that gave us some information, and I believe that it's in our best interest to, to deal with that information, not to, to throw things out there and say, "Oh, this is, look, it's campaign time. It's campaign time, the, the Dems must be doing this to, you know, to win a campaign." We didn't have that employee come to the meeting. We are reacting to it. And I think we need to react to it as a council together. Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, let me refer to that in a lot more detail because I came here tonight, prepared the talk in a lot more detail about this, not because of what's raised on the dais, but because of what has been raised in social media, okay, by political people who are running for election. It's no accident that this happened, okay? It's six weeks from an election. Now, the reason it's no, there's three problems with this, okay? The first is, it's highly surprising to see confidential HR information on social media. Okay? This, information is available to all of us. But I understand that one of us, Councilor Palmeri, made a request to HR, which he just said a couple of weeks ago, for the overall personal turnover numbers, the individuals' names, and the reasons for their leaving. Now, the numbers, well, an approximation of the numbers, they're not correct. But the numbers appeared on social media in a, in a post by the opposite party, which was then pushed out to all other social media things in Southington by various people running for election. It's obviously an electoral ploy. Okay? Now, the, what worries me is not the numbers, okay? But the list of people's names and the reasons for them retiring. Now, that information has got out, and it's confidential. Okay? It's, it is highly confidential. It's in HR, all right? It is any organization that I've been part of. So, Councilor Palmeri is entitled to ask for this information. Of course he is. We all are. But he's not entitled to share it, or he's not entitled to lose it. You know, maybe he left it at Panera and someone picked it up, I don't know. Okay? But to do so is a, is a serious ethical issue. Furthermore, if Councilor Palmeri thinks this is a problem to be addressed, or the other councilors do, that's never once been voiced in the last two years. Now, it is our duty as councilors, if we see a serious problem in the town, like what he pretends it is, then it is the duty to take it to the council to be discussed. It's not the duty to take it, you know, to take it in public, not to the council, but in public, six weeks before an election, to make a big deal about it. That's not the way we run business, okay? In the last two years, okay, he hasn't brought it up. And also, we, not only that, but we conducted a review of the town manager, uh, recently, okay? In the last two, in the last two months, I'm sorry. We conducted it in executive session. I can't refer to that review because it's an executive session. It's, it's, it's a HR issue again, and it has to be private, okay? But I will say that Councilor Palmeri did not bring it up in that review process. Now, if it's such a big deal or a big problem, it would have been brought up then. It wasn't.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Thank you.
He's discussing things of executive session that may have, may have not been said.
Thank you.
And that is, that is an issue, that he just broke executive session by stating that.
You can, you can, you can talk after I do, councillor, okay? The same way that I don't interrupt you. Thank you. Okay, now, the information posted was designed to show our town council, I think the Republican majority members, in a bad light, six weeks before the election. But it does not. Instead, it shows shade on all of us as we all have a responsibility to address what these posts said was a terrible problem. But worse, it trashes our town manager, our other managers and supervisors, and our employees currently working for the town. Points a finger at all of them. And to address this is the main reason why I'm, I'm talking about it. You know, I wouldn't have brought it up if it was just one of us, council, you know, politicians. But it, what it does is it trashes the whole organization. Okay, number three, the last point. What is, is there a merit to this claim? I can't respond to individual personnel cases, of course, as we are all bound by a sense of ethics, okay? But I can address certain things using other means. The first is the impact of our municipal pension system, MERS. The majority of the turnover, just over half, are folks retiring. The main engine driving these retirements is the municipal pension system, MERS. MERS was set up in such a way that you can retire as early as fifty without losing any significant lifetime benefits. This incentive to retire actually has been changed by legislation that went into place July twenty-twenty-five, okay? Now, people had to make a decision to retire because of that deadline, and they did. And pretty much everybody, you know, who, um, you know, i- is looking at that, who can take essentially pension benefits their rest of life without too much penalty, is going to take it. We, we don't, uh, you know, say it's a bad thing of our employees. It's not. It's a bad thing of the state that has, that has a pension policy that's so rich, okay? That people will do that, and they can retire, you know, in their fifties. Now, what, what does that mean? Well, just a side note, MERS is funded by us, all of us, the taxpayers. And that MERS pension, although there's been a little bit of less isolation to try and sort of, you know, deal with it, it's getting more and more expensive every year. Our, in twenty-twenty-four, our MERS contributions were five-point-one million. This year, they're five-point-nine million. It's a sixteen percent increase, and that's going to go on. Now, when you hear us on the dais talk about state mandates and all that stuff, that's one of them, okay? Just, just remember that. Okay, the, the second is, when, and I'll talk about what Mr. Perry was, sorry, Councilor Perry was pretending that I said. When we hired a new town manager a year ago, we gave Mr. Recadon a remit to solve certain problem areas in certain departments by approving service levels and to be forward-looking for the town. E.G., for example, by bringing in technology to either, you know, improve or replace our existing processes. And we hired him because he was of the same mind. Now, this causes changes, and folks respond to change in different ways, as we all understand. You know, some people don't like change. They like to continue to work as the way they did, and that's okay, all right? But a lot of other people get energized by it. So, we, you know, we have no complaints with the way the town manager has discussed, you know, has, um, addressed these change management issues. We haven't brought it up over time, and again, I'll, I'll refer back to the town manager's employee review. But I can point out, we have discussed the impact of this strategy on the dais this year, okay? For instance, building department improvements and fundamental technology upgrades that we were, we really, really needed. Okay, last, an excellent metric on our organization management is hiring. Can we attract new employees to our town? New employees with good ideas, you know, basic skill sets. The social media post under discussion here would say, "No," as people tend to shy away from organizations that are in chaos. We have no problem hiring new folks to replace department employees. No problem whatsoever. And they often come with an upgraded skill set. At the management level, our new hires have been excellent due to their enthusiasm and the new knowledge they bring. And once they are here, they stay. And I'll refer later on, if you don't mind, you can do it now, is to refer to, hold on. Let me go up here, see if I can work with me. Look for the idea. This will be in the minutes this evening. It comes from another, um, it comes from the Board of Finance. Board of Finance, at its last meeting, Chief Daley gave a report on the Police Department. And he said, "It's a pleasure working with the finance members, of course, and Mr. Recadon has fostered a different type of teamwork within the town. He likes this type of leadership. He feels they are one team and are all working together." He states, "Southington is a great town to work for." He adds that when he became chief, he was the youngest chief in the state, feels people were waiting for him to fail, and his staff is now in the same position because his staff is young, because a lot of the MERS retirements were obviously in the Police Department. Chief Daley states, "We are protected as a town because we are very community-oriented." And he states that the most important part is who we are hiring, and we are hiring some of the most qualified individuals." That's Chief Daley. He's run one of the biggest departments in our town. And by coincidence, he said that a couple of weeks ago at the Board of Finance meeting. So, yeah. Again, I believe strongly it's a political ploy. I hate to see these things at this time of year, not because it's against us, it isn't. But it's because it's against the town, the town employees, the managers and supervisors, and the people who are trying to drive this town forward into doing things that we haven't done over the last few years. You'll see it in the service levels, you'll see it in the budget, you'll see those impacts next year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tony. Chris?
I tried to write down comments, Tony, to, to, to respond to accusations you're making. First, I'm going to say again, I'm highly offended that you're going to make a statement of political purpose when we all sat here and saw someone come up and speak to us. And again, I give her courage for doing that. And when Councilwoman DePaolo was making a statement about us not having anything to do with it, your comment under your breath, "Yes, you did," is offensive as well. We had nothing to do with that. And again, people are here because they want their voice to be heard. They're coming to us for support. So, it's offensive, Tony.
I understand. The timing is totally, is totally.
I have a floor.
I understand.
Second of all, when we're talking about town employees, it is public information. I did not ask for any information other than what is public. Anyone can ask for freedom of information, request for the information that I requested. There's nothing wrong with what I requested. And frankly, it took me a little bit too long to get the information. I should have gotten it pretty quick. And it isn't even complete because there's still possibly some omissions from the list. That number that I said you is with possibly other omissions. Second of all, you mentioned posting on social media. I can tell you right now, I didn't post anything on it. I don't think Val did, and I don't know, I don't think Jack did either. And mentioning the proper way to handle it is to bring it to this council, which is, by the way, exactly what I did. And I was a little nervous to do it tonight, Tony, because of exactly what you're accusing me of. But I didn't go looking for the issue. The issue became aware. You mentioned the town manager's review. Had we known that these issues were going on when we gave that review, we would have had the conversation then. But we didn't know. How could I know if I didn't get the list till after the, the former employee spoke at the last meeting? I had no idea how many, how many employees have turned over. I had no idea about the morale within, within the town departments. I don't go looking for it, Tony. Cost of a review, frankly, I'd argue it's almost more costly not to do a review because it's also impacting our current employees because they have to naturally cover absences within their own departments. And if we can get people that are, that want to stay, as you mentioned, and are qualified in their positions, and they have longevity here, it's a cost-saving measure. The town manager already conducted a review, hired an outside firm to review, to separate some responsibilities within our town departments. So, that's a great first step. I didn't know that was done until I had a conversation with the town manager last week. Is there a merit to the complaint? We don't know, Tony. That's why I'm asking to have an outside audit, so we know if there's merit to it or not. And I mentioned before, I asked how many people conducted exit interviews? Four people. There's various reasons why people may not conduct an exit interview with the way it is currently. And I also don't think it's good practice to not interview people that are retiring. They may not be retiring for MERS, but we don't know, Tony, because we never asked them. So, again, it's presumptuous for you to make that statement that we know it's because of MERS when we don't know it's MERS. Again, I'm asking simply to put this on the agenda. Again, to your point, Bill, the only, all I got was how many resignations were? There's forty-five. It's not, it's not rocket science. There's forty-five people that resigned. We know there've been at least three since then. So, again, if there's nothing wrong, and, and frankly, I think it's going to help the manager too. Let him do, let him do a review. If everything's fine, everything's fine, and we move on with a surety that we don't need to concern ourselves with these issues that were brought forward. But if there isn't, and there are issues, I don't know why we wouldn't want to and why it's not incumbent upon us to act on what we heard.
I'll make one response, one only, so that, if you don't mind. Please. Okay. So, so you said that you weren't aware of these issues throughout the year when we've talked about things in departments that have had these issues throughout the year. And to pretend that you only know about them now, six weeks before the election, is, I'm sorry, I, I do not buy that at all. And I'll just leave it at that. We, we, you know, we can, we can move on.
So, just to clarify, just to clarify. Of course, I, Paul, I.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Of course, I know of individual issues. It's when they start adding up and we start seeing, wow, three resignations in a week and two-week period, that's when it starts being quantified. Of course, I know of some individual issues, Tony. I'm not saying I didn't know that. I'm saying I didn't, I had no idea there were forty-five town employees left in the calendar year.
Until after the last meeting when somebody came and said something.
Correct. I received the list after the last meeting.
When, just for the record, when did you request the list?
Prior to that.
So, you requested the list prior to the last meeting?
Because we had three other resignations within a short period of time.
And then after you rece, you and I were the only ones on the council who received that list. Where did it go after that? How did it, how did it go? I guess what Tony is saying, how did it go from our desk to social media from the Democratic Town Committee?
I shared it with our caucus that, that I had requested the list, and it was discussed of what is being done, and I.
With the Democratic Town Committee?
It, it was discussed with other people about what is being done to address the issue.
Okay, so I'll take that as a yes, as you're nodding. Okay. Before it came to the council, before it came to the council, you discussed it with the Democratic Town Committee before you brought it here to discuss your concerns.
I did not discuss the details of what I mentioned here.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Okay. We have, we have additional, Jim, Jim's been asking me. Go ahead, Jim.
I'd like to know if we analyzed the year-over-year turnover rates prior to this. So, it sounds like forty-five or forty-eight, or whatever it is, is a big number. But what happened last year, what happened the year before? So, before we go jumping around saying we have to have this big audit, do we really know that there's a situation? Also, I didn't look at the list, and I don't know for a fact, but I know that many on that list are represented by a union. So, do we have union grievances against the town because we're pushing people out? Again, I don't know. And I just have to say that my personal opinion is that it's none of my business. Now, I agree with you, if a constituent has a problem, we should bring that to the town manager and get a report back to the town manager. I don't want to go to HR. I don't ask for any HR information. I ask the town manager for information. So, again, I think this is premature, and I don't think it's really valid to discuss tonight.
Okay. We, yeah, we have, uh, we have a motion and a second. Anybody else? Mike, go ahead.
I, I thought Jen maybe had something. You're good. You're ready to speak?
Oh, I, I was curious if, if you've researched how much it costs to have this audit. I, I just, I don't know. I've never had one, so.
I haven't, and I'm curious, how much did the last restructuring, um, session cost, Alex? Because I would think it would probably be similar. But I have no idea because we weren't.
It was about six thousand dollars.
Okay, so I, I guess, I guess I'm concerned about, um, what I just heard, the timing of this, and spending taxpayer dollars seems very, I, I honestly, I would love to apologize to the town staff because this, this is not, um, what we've heard on the dais of the good things and the progress that's been happening inside each and every unit this year. We have had reports from every unit that there's been progress, improvements, ongoing. We have had reports from every unit that there's been progress, improvements, ongoing. And so to call for an audit where not a lot of research has been made, that makes me very uncomfortable.
Chris, I'm going to vote yes to your motion, but I'm going to move to table it till after the election. If this is a bona fide issue, I'll show good faith. I'll vote yes to it.
I appreciate that.
But I'm going to move to table it, just letting you know.
Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So I've been writing things down, and I know there's a lot of discussion. And one of my first questions was, how did Tony Morrison have this list? I didn't have the list. It seemed like he was prepared to talk about this. And then we kind of jumped around, and then, you know...
Can I answer that, Jack?
You, Mr. Chair, you stated, you know, you asked Chris questions on, oh, you know, the DTC, Democratic Town Committee, how... I think it's important to understand that our town committee did ask us what was going on after somebody came to this council meeting and brought this to light. So just to clarify, it wasn't organized, structured, and the town committee, we would have just said not to, and to, you know, not post until we do this. But we can't, we can't control the town committee on what they do. And I also want to highlight, I'm not running for reelection. Val's not running for reelection. Just so to call this political, or that there's some sort of gain that I get, please enlighten me what the gain is. I feel this is something we owe our employees. And if it's $6,000, we actually spent, I think, close to that on road borrowings on Russell Road. No, nobody wants to hear about that. But that's going nowhere, and we have a plan in place. But I don't know what the plan is. So I think, you know, this, when you look at the town staff, you know, $6,000 and make sure it's all good, I had town staff reach out, and some are scared or feel intimidated. So how do we go about that to make sure that they don't feel scared or intimidated? It may not quantify. It may just be one or two, or it may be 20. I don't know that. But how do we protect them? Bill, you mentioned, you know, as an employer, your employees, and, well, let's call it what it is. When you have an employee that's unhappy with the owner of the establishment, they usually leave. They don't try to come have a voice or reason. They just say, hey, you're not the one I want to work for. I'm going elsewhere. That's a little bit different, you know, with the government and town employees. It's not the same structure. You know, I guess my thing is if we're not going to move forward, I would encourage employees, current and former, to speak up. And then at that point, what are you going to say? It's all political by all them? But I want, as this council, to somehow put some sort of protections that there's no retaliation on anybody, or a path forward. Is there a way to do an anonymous thing to be able to protect our employees? Is there a way to do an internal survey so we don't have to spend $6,000, but we can make it anonymous? Like, I don't know the right way, but we need to act as a council. It's our job to do that. And, you know, it puts the town manager in a tough position that, you know, we aren't acting. We need to give him direction on what we want. So I don't know. I'm all in favor of doing this. HR files, you know, for government employees are foible. And, you know, when, I don't know, there's just, we owe it to our town employees, current and former, to make sure that there is no issues. And this is the way that you do it.
Thank you, Jack.
I would like to answer the question that he raised...
Hold on one second, Tony.
Yeah.
Jen had asked.
Oh, sorry.
To go next.
Sorry.
Just a couple of comments, and then I'm done. Do you realize the implications of what you're doing? You are dividing and creating a very culture that you are claiming to debunk. And it's really a sad, sad time for Sullington town employees to see that. And are you suggesting that we open up HR files on town staff? Wow.
I just... Tony, Councilor Perry made a statement. He doesn't know where I got the list from. I do have a list because I asked the town manager for it, as is my right, as I pointed out all councillors, because I wanted to know what was happening with our information ending up on social media, okay? The list I have has less names on it, but that's beside, that's the point. But I think it is the same list. So that's how I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Mike. Mike hasn't spoke yet. Let's let Mike... Thank you, Val. We'll get to you, Val.
Okay, so a couple of things along the lines of Councilwoman Clark. I want to give my sincerest apologies to every town employee in Sullington for this discussion. It's, I'm going to use my word, despicable we're even talking about it, okay? I feel really bad for the hard-working, happy employees that come to work every day, and they enjoy working for the town of Sullington. And believe it or not, every single person who works for the town has somebody that they report to. And if they're not comfortable going to that person that they report to, they have a union to back them up. And if they don't have a union, they have to go to the town manager, and the town manager answers to us. I pride myself, myself, sorry, in 24 years of being elected official, I don't get involved in personnel issues. Now, do they make a point? Do Val and Chris, and I'm sorry, councilpeople, Paul Merritt and DiPaolo and Mr. Perry, and Councilman Perry, do they make a point that this could be an issue? I don't know. Maybe. I don't get involved in personnel issues with town employees. But I just imagine the people who have resigned, or they've been asked to resign or be terminated, I'd like to know that number as well because I've heard stories. We're a small town. There's a lot of stories out there. And I do know for a fact that some people have been sat down and said, your behavior has been so poor, or the things that you've done have been so bad, either an investigation is going to happen, or you can tender your resignation. And resignations came, okay? So I know that's happened. I don't know for a fact, because like I said, I pride myself in not getting involved in personnel issues. What do we do with the people that refuse to have an exit interview? We can't make them do an exit interview. We can't sit them down and tie their hands to the table. You know, they can, so maybe there should be something that says that employee chose not to, you know, participate in an exit interview. Maybe that's a question that should be answered. But once again, I just apologize to the town staff that come to work every day, and they're putting in the time, and we value, I know I value their work, and I know most of us up here do. And I do apologize for this display tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mike. Val, please.
I just want to respond to a few items. First, we're not, we're not creating a culture. We're the town council. We are the ultimate authority, the ultimate oversight authority. And so if a former employee comes and provides information, we need to deal with it. I understand, Councilman Del Santo, if you don't want to get involved in personnel, you know, information. I don't really want to either. But if we have information that is coming to us, and then we obtain more information, and we have an awful large number here of retirements, resignations, and terminations, I believe it's in the former employee's best interest and the current employee's best interest to find out what's going on. We don't know what's going to come out of this. So I feel like we're, that is our job, and I think our current employees trust us to do our job. And, you know, to say that we're creating this culture, that's absolutely wrong. If that's your opinion, that's fine, Jen, but we're not creating it. We're trying to do our job.
Okay. Any other comments before we move the motion to a vote? The motion is to add an agenda item. The motion is to add an agenda item at the end of today's meeting, new business item B, to review, a review of the town hiring practices as proposed by Mr. Paul Merritt. Madam Clerk, call her all.
Perry?
Yes.
Clark?
No.
Del Santo?
No.
DiPaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes to agenda.
Morelli?
No.
Morrison?
No.
Paul Merritt?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
No, the motion passed, I'm sorry, yes, the motion fails five to four as it requires a supermajority. Okay. We are going to move on to additional councilperson communications.
I have something. Go ahead. I'd just like to say thank you to the Sullington Chamber of Commerce for a very nice day last Wednesday. They had their annual golf tournament. And I was happy to golf there with Councilman Dietzick, Josh Salerno, Serfino, sorry, and Kevin Connady. We had a wonderful day. We met a lot of local business owners. We talked to a lot of employees, and we had a great time. I was also fortunate to go on Friday to the Armory and talk to some people at the Veterans Standout. And I never knew what it was, but what it is, is it's a way for veterans to contact different organizations and groups and facilities to provide them with food, shelter clothing, legal assistance, insurance, Medicare. They had other insurance people there. And I did speak to a veteran that was there, and he told me that he thought it was very, very useful, and that he got a good bit of information out of the time. So thank you to that group as well.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else for councilperson communications? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to just wrap up and say that I had the great opportunity to support SOCA, the Arts, the Community Arts Center downtown, and wanted to thank Diane Thompson, Dawn Misselli, the entire SOCA board, all the local businesses, the employees, the artists, everybody who contributed to making the Dinner Under the Stars. I think it was last weekend what it was. It was just a beautiful, beautiful weekend, a beautiful night, supporting the Art Center and, you know, breaking some bread, if you will, on the town green or just adjacent to the town green, and enjoying a meal that was put on by all the local businesses who donated the food, the local artists who donated their time to make some of the art giveaways. And thanks to all who were involved. It was a nice, nice event. Okay, we're going to move on to report of special committees. We have a apple harvest. Chris?
Yes, a much lighter topic. We have our apple harvest coming up in a couple of weeks. The festival will officially kick off on Friday, October 3rd. Opening ceremonies are that day, October 3rd at 5:30. So the council, the town manager, please come join on the opening ceremonies to kick off the festival this year. I'd like to acknowledge our sponsors. These are people that have paid quite a bit to keep our festival affordable. Before I even mention their names, once again, the festival is completely self-sustaining, so we're not taking any tax dollars that we receive in the budget to fund any portion of the festival. So again, these sponsors go a long way to make sure that we can do that for our residents. So thank you to the sponsors, Carefree Home Pros, Total Bass Systems, GLG Law, Quantum Organics, Raya Clinic, and Vincent Nefito, American Fidelity Insurance, Cox Communication, BL Companies, Advest Investment, Tocan, Carden Home Improvement, Awesome Apple Crisp, Rosie's Royal Chocolate, Elite Remodeling Services, Comprehensive Orthopedics, Goose Town Communications, Richard Chevrolet, Valvoline, Grit and Wit, Liberty Bank, and Hartford Healthcare. So again, thank you to all those sponsors for contributing to the festival. Aside from the festival advisory committee, I'd also like to acknowledge these are committee heads that volunteer their time throughout the festival. And I'd also be remiss not to thank all the community volunteers that come out to man our beverage booths, or information booth, and t-shirt sales, that we really want to thank all our residents for doing that. But these are, were individuals that volunteer their time during the course of the festival. So for finance accounting, our chair, Tom Lombardi, Jim Morelli, Donna Solis, Kathy Sweetman, Pam Standforth, Dennis Bougie, and Denise Johnson. Our beverage sales and distribution, thank you Carl Carlon, who serves as our chair. With him is A.J. Colwick, Pat Keneffich, Brandon Berlin, and Abby Kelly. Volunteer recruitment, who is in charge of recruiting all the volunteers I mentioned earlier that help us throughout the duration of the two weekends. Thank you to A.J. Colwick, who's our chair of volunteer recruitment, Brandon Berlin, Abby Kelly, Stephen Mulaney. I'd like to thank our assistant festival coordinator, Lara Nichols, who's with us, this is her second year with us back in that role. And our festival sponsorship and festival coordinator, Melissa Kukosa, who have done just a fantastic job. Some of the other sponsors that potentially may be joining us are BMW, Bristol Health, Ion Bank, and Price Chopper as well. We have some great new attractions for the festival this year. Grit and Wit, which I mentioned earlier, is a sponsor. They're going to be joining us for the first weekend when we don't have our Arts and Crafts Show. That'll be behind the main stage. Hartford Healthcare is sponsoring a wellness experience. We have an a cappella group from Yale University. So again, there should be some new and exciting features coming to this year's festival. I'd also like to acknowledge, in charge of the parade, is Heidi Lamberto and Tony Lamberto. In charge of our website and social media, Lara Nichols. Entertainment, Melissa Kukosa, Jerry Limer and Joe Materato. Arts and crafts show, thank you to Melissa Kukosa, Barbara Paray, and Susan Robinson. And finally, thank you, huge thank you to all our town departments for all their contributions that helped make the festival success as well. So again, hopefully we'll see you all down there, especially the opening ceremonies, which is Friday, October 3rd at 5:30 PM on the main stage.
Anybody have questions regarding apple harvests? Okay, hearing none. Move on to item six, Town Managers' Report and Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to present a enterprise zone tax abatement for Wine Light LLC. I'm hoping we have somebody from the applicant here. If not, I'm more than willing to discuss the proposal.
Do we have an applicant here who would like to speak on behalf of this?
So we had Lou Perillo scheduled. He had something come up last minute that he had to take care of, so I'll give a brief overview of this. What's that?
Come on up, gentlemen.
Oh, come on up.
As you come up, if you can just state your name and address and the company you're with.
Joseph Raffini, Northeast Wine Making, part owner.
Okay.
I wasn't really prepared to come up because I thought Louis was going to be here. But I'm here to answer any questions for the application.
This is a, this is a tax abatement in an enterprise zone, the state program. Can you describe that?
Absolutely. So this is a state program. The way it works is the town needs to give approval for the program. It's as of right approval, and the state is going through, and part of the checklist in the application is this approval. So the state is reimbursing the town 50% of the tax abatement for five years. After five years, the tax abatement goes away, and then the building is back on the tax rolls. We do this quite often. I like this one in particular because it is subsidized by the state of Connecticut. You have, the town council has approved several tax abatements in the last, in this term where there was no reimbursement whatsoever. So this is a win-win. Initially, this project has been a Kickstarter for the West Queen Street Corridor. If you haven't been by there recently, I'd encourage you to drive by. It's gorgeous. It's a humongous facility, nice parking layout. The town is also investing alongside this project for the road that has been in the capital budget in the last two or three cap budget cycles. So this is the kickoff project, and we have, Mr. Perillo told me today, we have several more projects with letters of intent to purchase on that road. And Mr. Perillo said it's because this project started, kicked it off, and really energized that area. And I know Mr. Del Santo, as the chairman of the strike, was, has a few words.
Yes, you know, we've talked about this, I've talked about it with Mr. Perillo. It's been through the strike committee for the road, for this property that's going on. And I've heard from Mr. Perillo that this site alone is going to hopefully attract. There's five other potential lots on that property, and there's interest for all five of them. This is a $4 million project. There could be up to $225,000 of equipment in the building. And, you know, 16,750 square-foot building. It's in the enterprise zone, so it's an as of right. And I really think that the tax abatement is a good tool for Sullington to use to bring business to Sullington. You know, I always joke, but I like poaching from other towns. They're coming from Plainville. They're coming to Sullington because they know Sullington is the place to be. And the whole concept of this, of this business sounds very interesting to me. So my wife is a wine drinker, so I'm sure we'll be spending some time there.
Yes, Bill?
Yeah, I just want to say personally, thank you for being willing to invest $4.1 million in our town. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being a partner.
Val?
Just a quick question, Alex. It's, so it's 50% reimbursement from the state to us? No cap on that, just 50%?
So the state is going to go through a, an application, and they will cap it, and they have actually... have actually preeminently asked the applicant to go through and give more data, because they're getting very, very particular. I'm not sure if you were tracking what happened at DCD, and some of the, the current things at the state level, where there's some things going on. So, the state is being very, very, very strict with these applications, and is, is really putting the applicant through the grinder to make sure. They're literally separating out the toilet from the tile a foot over, what they're gonna tax abate, what they're not gonna tax abate.
So...
There's no, for this project, there won't be a cap, it'll be, it'll be the full...
So it could be, so it's, it's, it could be up to 50% type? I don't even know how...
It'll be 50% on the abatement. So the state's not gonna...
It's only 50%.
Okay.
The state is not going to approve an abatement for the whole project.
Right.
They only approve, approve the manufacturing portion.
Okay, alright.
So, the tasting room, and the restrooms, the state has, has said those are not accepted.
So for clarification, if the state approves $20,000 in abatement, we fund 10%? They, they, we fund $10,000, they fund $10,000?
They reimburse us.
Reimburse.
Reimburse us $10,000.
If, if the state approves $30,000, we still fund 50% of $30,000? And likewise, if they only fund $10,000 of an abatement, our share goes down? It's still 50%?
Of the abatement.
Right.
Abatement.
So we don't make up the difference that the, that they, that they reduce it or increase?
Whatever they reduce, we get the full tax on.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? Tony?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this is, you know, we need to grow the ground list in town. The ground list will grow by quite a lot next year because of the revaluation. And if you look at the last five years since the last revaluation, our ground list has grown like 15, 16%, but our revenues are also, you know, that we need to spend, expenditures, sorry, has also grown by 15% or so. So, you know, we need to be very proactive about this. And the good thing about these things is that we've laid the groundwork for this over the last two, three years. There's a strategy behind this, and the types of businesses we're going after, and this is just one of them. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And just for clarification, can, you said that this was by right. What does that mean?
So, the, the town of Southington has opted into what's called the enterprise zone within the state of Connecticut. It's a program where we, we make zoning a little bit more accessible for certain types of businesses, like manufacturing, and there's certain parts of town that are in the zone that the state has put on the map. So when, when you're in the enterprise zone, the state will reimburse. When you're not in the enterprise zone, like Juniper was not, probably six months ago, five months ago, when they came to you, there's no program. That comes straight from the taxpayers in town.
Understood. Thank you. Jack?
Just to elaborate a little bit on that, the enterprise zone, to my knowledge, way before my time, obviously being on the council, or even understanding what's going on locally, it's my understanding, the enterprise zone was formed by the state when Pratt and Whitney left. And it was a huge impact to our local economy, because, you know, they, they had, I think it was about 3,000 employees. So when they left, it hurt all the mom and pop businesses that they were patrons for, gas stations, because they're not coming in and out of town. And Pratt and Whitney is part of the reason why Queen Street has developed to where it is today, and when they left, it like put a big hurting on our town. So that's where the state kinda stepped in and said, hey, you're, you know, kind of suffering in this area, let's create this zone in a partnership. So, it's nice to see that the state, you know, this has gotta be over 20, 30 years ago now, and they're still, you know, not like leaving us high and dry and saying, hey, figure it out yourself. So, it's nice that... Is there a timeline that the enterprise zone will stay?
They can cut it whenever they wanna cut it, but there's no official sunset.
Well, it's nice that, you know, we've been able to recoup some of that lost revenue and create jobs in the community, you know, through this program, so.
Thank you. Mike?
Just a comment on Councilman Perry. I think what Alex alluded to earlier is they're really crossing every t and dotting every i, because there's been some fraud. There's been some fraud in the bigger cities where people were directing folks to, to places to put their businesses and then get money back from doing it. So, we're not involved in that, but I think it's a great project, I'm sorry, program that we've used many, many times. And you mentioned things like Juniper, you mentioned things like, like the boutique hotel that we've approved in the past. I'll still stand behind the abatement process. I think it's a good tool that we have in our toolbox to use to bring business to town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for coming. We're gonna...
Thank you.
We'll bring it up for action in old business later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then, just, just as a quick summary, it has been a really exciting few weeks, and the town of Southington has been very welcoming. We've had a lot of customers from Southington, so, so far, so good. It's a lot of positive reaction, a lot of positive feedback. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, not the agenda, but I do have a quick update from Mr. Palmerick in the last meeting, if I would...
Okay, please.
Mr. Palmerick, you asked about the roads, the 303, 47-ish that came in for the tar, the additional tar funds. I told you I'd get back to you, and I, and I, the highway department's been working to identify roads. They've identified them. I'm hesitant to say them publicly, I will, because we are going out, we're getting quotes to see how much we can do within a certain amount of time. So I will let you know what they are, but this is still preliminary. If you wouldn't entertain me briefly?
You gonna say the names?
I will.
You just said you weren't gonna say the names.
I said, I'm hesitant to...
Okay.
But I know everybody's been asking, so I want, so, and then these are areas, general areas, so 546...
Can you speak into the microphone, if you could, please?
546 Jude Lane, that's at the corner of Walkley, in that area. Duck Pond Crossing cul-de-sac, there's been some drainage issues that have been pushed off for over five years over there. Every year, they're getting ignored, and this year, we, the Public Works Department really wants to hit those head-on. It's gonna be expensive, but they're getting, they're getting the quotes right now. 15 Steeplechase, that area, where they're identifying, they're gonna see if they can fit that into the budget. 600 Canal Street, heavily traveled, traveled road through that corridor, looking at 483 Flanders in that area, some significant problems with the pavement there, and 375 West Center Street. So, the goal on this project is to acutely hit the localized areas that are not, you're not gonna do a full repave on a quarter mile or even 200 yards. You're focusing in on some of those annoying pothole cracks that keep reappearing year after year after year. So that's really what we wanna focus, to really make the quality of the driving a lot better.
I think, thank you. I think from some of the names, if I recall, some of these are areas that I've seen people say, well, you, you know, you paved this section, and you paved this section, but there's a small piece in the middle that you didn't pave. And if I remember, you know, going back a year, year and a half ago, the explanation that was given at Public Works, or by, one of the department heads, if I recall, was the reason that some of these areas are not paved between what's paved in, on the other ends, is because they're oftentimes worse than the treatment that is being given on, on the, the other end. So, and it takes a, a different methodology, and to bring the different equipment in might not make sense for that given year. So we plan to do them at later, later years, because you oftentimes, you might do a Cape Seal, for example, on either side, but then in the middle, in that small area, you might need a full-depth reconstruction. So, I'm glad to hear that we're getting to some of those, and appreciate that you brought the update from last meeting. Go ahead, Jack.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, you stated 43 Flanders. I, I don't think you said Road or Street.
I will, give me 30 seconds, let me check my email. I'll get it for you.
It's 50/50, just, we can look it up. What, maybe the same?
It's like the apex of the universe, Flanders and Flanders.
We have to like have Flanders East, Flanders West, or something.
Well, it's like Berlin Street and Berlin Ave, same thing. So, I, I appreciate, I just was curious.
Thanks. Okay, anything else from the town manager?
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Chris?
Just, first of all, thank you. I really appreciate it, and, and hearing at least that we are using that, those funds to, to hit some of these high-density roads, it's appreciated. One other thing, Alex, I'm hoping you can look into, you, you had mentioned to us, you shared with the council, the issues with paychecks flex, and, and the concern you're having with town. From actually 10 months ago now, so the November 25th meeting, I had asked if you had reached out to other municipalities specifically related to timekeeping, and you had mentioned several towns here, so Woke, Bristol, Plymouth, Cheshire, Old Saybrook, and that they were happy and no complaints. I'm wondering, can you follow up with them and find out some of the pain, the trouble that you're experiencing here in Southington? You know, again, these are firms, towns you already reached out to, and they already said they're using it. I'm, I'm curious what they have to say, how they transitioned, now that we're knee-deep in it. I can use the record, too.
Thanks. Tony?
Yes, a question for the, the town manager. Alex, when you're ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Just, you know, with the discussion we had this evening, I'm gonna ask you a question. Would it be okay if you gave approval to make your employee review public? And I can understand if you say no, and I fully understand that. If I was in your position, I'd probably say no. But I thought I'd ask the question anyway, because I think it's very vital to what we discussed tonight.
I haven't thought about that. I guess it's my privilege to...
It's your privilege.
...break, so it was unanimously positive review, so...
Say it again?
It's my, I guess...
You gonna waive it, or you're not?
I will, I will waive it.
One minute.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, does the council as a whole want it waived?
I don't want it. Oh, I don't, I don't need to see it. You mean...
You've seen it?
Yes.
Is there any objection? Is there, I mean, I, I am pretty transparent and open?
Chris, do you object?
We talked about it in executive session. I shared earlier tonight that things were brought to our attention that we didn't know when we conducted that review, so...
So you don't want the town manager's review from last month put, made public?
It, it's up to the town manager, but I'm, but I'm also stating that we weren't aware of some of the issues that we brought up tonight.
Okay. Anybody else? Jack?
I don't, I just, a little puzzled. I, I don't know, it's, to my understanding, it's not complete, so I don't know what we'd be showing.
Okay. Val?
I have no comment.
Okay. Does any, Jen, Bill, do you guys object to the town manager?
No objection.
No objection.
Jim?
No objection.
Mike?
The only thing I'll say is, I don't think, I think we put him on the spot. I mean, I, I let him think about it, and if he wants to, he can do so whenever. He doesn't have to do it on the record. He can do it over the next couple of days, or he may tell us, so we'll go...
So the one, the one thing I will say is, there's some alluding to some, some problems, and part of the, the audit that we're talking about is, you're gonna have to get a release from personnel, warts and all, that may have some very difficult things for employees to have made public. And that's, some of that is in my review. I'd prefer to maybe do a summary of it.
Or you can redact anything that's sensitive.
Redact it, yeah. Okay. I can take out some, some language...
Anything that's...
Just to kinda protect some, some of those sensitive...
Those would be comments that you might have...
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Alex, if you, if you're uncomfortable with it, please, I withdraw.
I can, why don't I just give the, the ratings? We could take the comments out, we'll just do the ratings. Isn't that fair?
Yeah, it's fine, by my...
I'll, I'll release the ratings, and I'll release the, the questions and the ratings.
And I think, Chris, there's nothing confidential, I, I mean, as far as executive session, I mean, you and I met before that, that wasn't executive session. We, you and I went through details, kinda wrote the reviews. We came up with the, with the proposed ratings that were reviewed in executive session. So, I mean, that, there's nothing there that's, that's privileged between you and I, because that's not an executive session matter.
No.
Okay.
But Paul, again, to Tony's point, I'm not, I'm not looking, I'm not looking for problems, but when things are brought to our attention that we didn't know when we had that conversation...
Yeah, fair.
I can't go back in time and change some of the thi... Had I known then what I know now, yes, it might've been a different conversation. That's my point. And, and I can't go back in time and change that.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and I wanna also highlight, not, not trying to, the comments made earlier were not directed towards Alex, so I wanna go on the record. This is not, you know, saying Alex is, we're kinda grabbing, we're just stating that, you know, we heard an employee come out. Obviously, Alex is in the town manager's office, there's department heads, there's other people in the, the organization. So, I wanna go on the record that I don't think Chris, Val, or myself have been targeting. Now, what Morrison is stating is kinda bringing it back to that we have an issue with Alex. No, we heard other issues that we may need more info on and to look into, and I think this helps Alex. Like, this is not to Alex, this is an independent thing, and then Alex could, you know, obviously operate in his capacity. So, I wanna go on the record, this is not, and, and I don't think it's fair to drag anybody's, you know, name through any of this, and that's not what our intentions are here tonight. It was just more of, hey, see if there's issues, why people are leaving. Alex is, you know, the, the town hall's so big, it's impossible for Alex to be in every room, in, in every department, and then you have the municipal center. So, I, I just wanna go on the record that, you know, it's kinda being steered that it's an Alex issue, and, and I don't think Chris, Val, or myself are saying this, and I wanna apologize on the record to Alex that if this is being presented to you that way.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to Town Attorney's Report, number seven.
Mr. Town Attorney, Assistant Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I'll report on two issues. The first, the volunteer firefighter attacks abatement. I was not significantly involved in this, but this is regarding the permitted $2,000 tax abatement to volunteer firefighters and EMS personnel. And the town attorney did provide an opinion on this, that there had been stipends given previously, and that he thought it was best to, under the, under the statute and town ordinance, to stop doing it that way, and to do it with an actual abatement. So he gave an opinion as to that, which I think the town council has, so, other than that, I did not do the research.
There's nothing in our packet.
I noticed earlier today, yeah, somebody also from, from our side asked about it, and, and I said, that didn't get put in the packet?
No.
So I emailed it to everybody this afternoon, because I also realized it wasn't in the packet. So, you know, maybe later on, we could start the dialogue, we could table it till the next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
But yeah, if you have it hard copy, and you wanna pass it down at the very least. The, the, the essence of it is, there, there was an inquiry, and Chris, you were copied on it, so you have it in an email. You have this opinion in your email from a couple of weeks ago, I think. There was an inquiry about whether the interpretation that was being used of the state legislation for, for the volunteer firefighters was, had flexibility in whether it could be either an abatement or a stipend, et cetera. So, the town attorney wrote, reviewed the legislation, wrote an opinion, and said, the, the language says abatement or exemption. And so, you know, the, the feeling is that maybe stipend is not the right thing to do. The concern with the stipend was, you know, if somebody's qualified for a $2,000 abatement, then they're taxed on stipend, so they lose $400, $500, whatever the tax rate is for that individual. There's also, you know, a, a different perspective that you can look at from the other side as well. So, I'd like to talk about that maybe during the old business section, and then, I think, tabling it and asking the town attorney to go back and look at some options as well, may be something we wanna consider. Okay, and 22 Main Street?
So, yes, 22 Main Street, I'm much more involved in, and this is the sale of that property, where there was a 90-day closing, but we date for closing from when the contract was signed, but it was clearly anticipated that it could go beyond that. There were two natural 30-day extensions that they had the right, as long as they were pursuing the approvals diligently, the zoning approvals. They did face some delays in that. We gave them the first 30-day extension. They have now submitted the zoning application and the site plan. And it's set for a hearing, I think, with the Zoning Board of Appeals on October 15th. And then after that, the hearing, you know, is tentatively set for the Planning and Zoning Commission, tentatively on October 21st. So they will be requesting that second 30-day extension. Based on the actions that they've taken, it seems pretty clear that they're entitled to that. Provided that goes smoothly. The idea from the buyer's attorney is that we should be able to close fairly quickly after that. They have an appeal period that they would want to get passed. But he says the buyer is excited to do that. So that's the latest update on that.
Questions? Yeah.
So just, I mean, Scott, you feel that they're reason, they're moving reasonably along, not trying to delay at all?
There was some delay at first, and I think that was related to unhappiness with the architect that they were doing. But now they have one. The attorney, I think the more recent delay was just the attorney getting to it. He's very responsive now, and I think at this point, it's on track. He and I are gonna work on, uh, the restrictions and, uh, the parking easement as well. But I, I believe now it's moving forward. They're past the difficult stage, so, um, provided that goes smoothly. But they're, they seem motivated now.
And it's within the contract that we allowed them a couple of extensions?
As long as they're diligently-
Diligently working.
Diligently doing it, which now, I mean, there might have been some argument earlier, you know? I, I don't think it's probably accurate to say they were not. But you could have argued, now I don't think there's any argument to that.
Okay, good, thank you.
And the ZBA, I think is, I think our regulations require them to go to ZBA for the rooftop dining, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on 22 Main?
Happy to see that that's going forward. I would, I would just ask that as we get closer to the date, that we, um, we set some tentative closing dates, anticipating the 15 days passing, so that we're not taking things in, uh, in series, and we're taking some things in parallel. Of course, the date can be postponed if, uh, something gets delayed. But I'd like to get that going, because that's money that goes back to the town. So the sooner, um, we get that closing.
Sure. And the buyer's attorney indicated that he thought his client would, you know, be eager to close as soon as it was possible. So we're gonna be talking about that shortly, so.
Thank you. Anything else on 22 Main? Awesome. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to item eight, Public Communications. Anybody who'd like to come up and speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jill Fragola. I live at 39 Swex Farm Road in Plainsville. And I'm the former town employee who spoke at the last meeting. What I said was true. I was not targeting, targeting one person. It was a concern of mine. I had been there for 27 years, and I just retired. And what I saw and what I felt bothered me so much that I felt like I had to say something to the town council. For me, it had nothing to do with politics. And for you, Mr. Morrison, to assume and say that it was political is offensive, because it had nothing to do with that for me.
Not, not right now.
I did it because it bothered me that much that I felt like I had to say something. And you say, yes, you have department heads, and yes, you have a town manager. But if you don't feel like you can go to your department head, or you don't feel like you could go to the town manager, this is the only place to come. This is supposed to be for the public to speak. And I feel like I have been thrown under the bus and put into something that I didn't do. I got sent a post that the Republican Town Committee sent about my speech, how it was political. It was never political for me. It was personal. It's how I felt. It's what I saw from my years of working. And the last year, I'd been with everybody, leaving and retiring. I did not retire because of MERS. Was it a concern? Of course, it was a big change. But that is not why I left. And that's why a lot of other people may not have left. But in the, in your statement, in the statement, it says 50 to 60 people retired because of MERS. Well, what happened to the rest of them?
50 to 60 percent, I think.
Percent? What about the 40 and 50 percent? Not, not one of you reached out to me to see what's going on? Were you concerned of anything I said? It was difficult for me to come up here. And this is why. This is why maybe nobody wants to come and talk to the town council. Because it turns into something political. And for me, it was never that. And I'm offended, really offended, that it was put out that way. Because for me, it wasn't. And I stated that when I said it. The timing, unfortunately, I had never thought of it. I just retired. It's not that I waited for voting for political, for parties. I have, I'm not, that's not me. I, I am a registered Democrat. I don't vote party lines. I vote for who I believe's gonna do a good job. That's what this town council should do. It should be bipartisan. You should be fighting for all of us. All of us who're still there, all of us who have left. And yes, people are afraid to speak up, because they don't know what's gonna happen. And it shouldn't be like that. I loved what I did. I loved going to work every day. I loved meeting the taxpayers. That was the favorite part of my job. But I feel like you've made it political. Not you personally, the committees. You've said things that are untrue. I, everything I said in my statement was true. And I, I'm, I'm offended. I'm really offended that you've made it political when for me, it was personal. It's how I felt. It bothered me as a former town employee and a Suddington taxpayer. Thank you for your time.
You were in the Finance Department, right?
I was in the Tax Department.
Tax Department.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to correct something.
You wanted, did you want to, did you want to-
No.
Counsel, you're good, right?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deb Maffiolini.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Deb Maffiolini.
Deb Maffiolini. And what's your address?
My address is 30 Deerbrook Circle. And I am also a former town of Suddington employee, recently retired, also from the Tax Department. Coincidentally. But I had no intention of being up here at this podium, speaking to you tonight. But what I heard compelled me to do so. I don't understand why you're apologizing, sir, to the town employees for discussing what was brought here intentionally to be discussed. It needs to be discussed. People are upset. People are unhappy, want answers. And no, if you're an employee, maybe you can't get answers within your place of employment. Yes, you mentioned the hierarchy, but sometimes that just doesn't work. And, sir, the, the snickering, the eye-rolling, the disgraceful comments, that really was very offensive. This has nothing to do with politics. It was brought here to the entire council for all of your ears. The fact that someone is trying to twist this into a political ploy is disgusting. You all need to work together. And if there's a problem, you need to find the root of it. And that's what we're here for.
Thank you. Did you tell us when you retired?
I retired in May.
Congratulations.
And it was not because of MERS. I would have liked to continue to work a little longer, but I was uncomfortable with some of the changes I saw and were happening around me. Yes, I understand that change is important. Things are changing and growing all the time. But sometimes the way change happens isn't really in everyone's best interest.
Chair, may I ask a question? Thank you.
There are, there are, we're gonna put, we're gonna argue, we're gonna put it through the public's ear. I'm allowed to make a mo-
I'm allowed to make a decision on public comment as the chair, as to whether to allow engagement with the public. That's my prerogative. Val, please. Let me handle the meeting, please.
Well, it's intimidating, Mr. Chair, by you having a dialogue back and forth. They feel less empowered than we.
Chair, he's out of order.
Just give me a minute, please, Jack.
You guys are out of order. We've never allowed it to happen on this dais.
Jack, time out. Give me one minute, please.
Allow them to speak.
May I call you, Deb?
Yes, you may.
I'm not gonna allow anybody to ask you questions unless you want them. So it's your, it's your choice. Would you like to have somebody ask you a question, or no?
I'm not really sure I'd be prepared to answer a question.
You don't need to. I was asked, and given the fact that we have people coming out in the public to talk about this, I want to give the opportunity for you to hear a question. If you don't want to hear it, that's okay as well.
I can hear a question. I'm not sure I'd be prepared to answer it on the spot like this.
It's your choice. You, you let me know. Mr. Dietzick has asked. Would you like to hear the question, or no?
Don't, if you don't know the answer, you're not comfortable.
I would like to hear the question.
If you'll notice, I voted tonight, again, with the Democrats on this issue.
I did notice that.
I'm not playing politics here.
I appreciate that.
And I wish that, where it's like, we're getting so close to the issue, you know, you're the second speaker, and I'm getting like, what, it's like we're solving the problem. And what is, what, what is the issue? Don't, you don't have to give me a specific person, or an event, or just, what is it that you feel? And again, don't answer the question if you don't want to, but what is it? Give us something that I can-
It's hard to pinpoint in just a few words. It's, it's just been a lot of change. And, um, you mentioned the paycheck system. Very difficult transition.
That's the digital payment system?
Yeah. And maybe not very well-thought-out decision before it was implemented a little too quickly. I don't work in that department, but, um, we feel the effects of it when you're trying to learn how to use such a thing, and losing time from your workday for sometimes nonsensical issues. And your department head is losing work, work time out of their workday, because it doesn't work. And it's not, not easy to work with. And, um, again, just things that are, just changes that are made spontaneously, maybe not well-thought-out, maybe change is good, but maybe in a different way. I also feel that some of the job cuts that happen, you bring in someone that's supposed to do a dual job, then maybe it doesn't work out. And then I think there have been three instances where the job that was cut has to be reinstated. Does that cost more money to the taxpayers? Because you're paying someone else a higher salary, and then now you need to bring that person back? It just, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Pardon me?
Was that in the Tax Department, bringing the, bringing it?
Uh, no.
Okay. I really appreciate-
It's just observations.
You know what?
And, and I would have liked to work for another year or two, and, um, but it just, it was time.
Super, super valuable feedback. We appreciate the fact that you're willing to do it.
Again, not political.
Understood.
And to be, having people targeted as such is just disgraceful.
And we, uh, you know, we did have a technology subcommittee that we chartered a couple of years ago, that it identified some of the, the areas, you know, not necessarily paychecks, but the fact that we wanted to go digital wherever we could, and the town manager was, you know, working with staff.
Yeah, it makes sense. I mean, change can make sense. It can be efficient.
Yeah. We know that sometimes some of those changes can be, uh, can be tough, so, um... And it's also tough for you to come out here and talk about it, so we appreciate you doing that.
And I hadn't planned on it. But again, the, the exchange that happened, and some of the facial expressions and the rudeness, I, I feel like I can't support that.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Effie Wutajanas, 53 Rustic Oak Drive. I also didn't expect to speak, but, um, I just wanted to talk. It's my understanding that the retirees do not get exit interviews, and there's only a handful of exit interviews that are done. So most everyone on the council has managed staff or run a large business, or a small business, or whatever. So I think you know the importance of getting employee feedback, especially when they're leaving. So if this is not being done for every employee, it needs to be implemented. That's a huge deficiency in managing staff for the town. That needs to be implemented. I've been managing staff. I've been on the receiving end of getting resignations and exit interviews, and reviewing them, and what I have to do with them. I actually recently left my position and resigned, and also had an exit interview. And I feel like my feedback was very valuable to my employer to receive. I, in no way think those things are divisive. I think it helps the employee culture. It helps to identify issues. It helps to improve communication if there's deficiency in communication, if there's lack of resources for the job. And when you post the new job position and look for candidates, you know that you have to improve that job, or you have to redefine the job description, so that you can find an appropriate candidate. So that's my opinion. This is not political. This is just like staff management. And I really believe in order to be fair to employees, new, old, future, past employees, it's very important to provide them a forum where they can give their feedback on their experience. And that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
I was not expecting to speak either, so I was making my notes on here. Katie Wade, 39 Madeline Lane. A little concerned that some of you seem to think that pointing out a problem is causing the problem. So my understanding is that the information that was shared on social media was a video of the public, or of the employee's comments from the public comment section at the last meeting, and a caption with the approximate number of employees who have left town employment in the last year. So no privileged information, or what anyone would consider to be information about town personnel was shared. I didn't even hear anyone question the accuracy of the information. Now, Mr. Morrison was giggling and hard to follow, but he did seem to be accusing the former town employee of lying, or that maybe the Democrats have been somehow getting people to leave their secure municipal jobs with pensions, so that they could make a political issue. Do you guys know what the average turnover rate for municipal, non-education employees is in the U.S.? It's about 8% annually. We're at around 22%. Okay. So actually, it sounds to me like some of you are making a political decision to pretend like nothing is happening until after the election. Thanks for your time.
Anybody else like to come up and speak? Good evening.
Beth Baker, 82 Alder Lane. Despicable. What is despicable is that you don't want to spend $6,000, or whatever it is, to look at what's going on with the current employees. Now, a lot of them retired, left, went on to different jobs. Retirees are living their best life. It doesn't matter. The ones that are working there, those are the ones that you have to protect. Those are the ones you have to look at and say, what's the problem? Is there a problem? Yes or no? So you hire new people, you throw 20, 30, $40,000 at them, because they're new. Take $6,000 and look into your current employees. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion, Mrs. Baker. Anybody else? Sorry? Anybody else like to come up and speak? Okay, hearing none, we will close Public Communications and move on to item nine, Old Business. Action on Report of Board of Finance. A.
Mr. Chair, my apologies. I don't know if the finance minutes got into the packet.
Okay. It's not in the-
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. B, Wine Life LLC Enterprise Zone Application.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna be recusing myself, and I will leave the dais.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Clock will recuse herself from this, and-
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Sorry, I'll wait for, once the woman clocked to leave the dais. I'd like to make a motion to approve the LLC, I'm sorry, Wine Life LLC Enterprise Zone Application.
And we, we have a motion?
Second.
A second from Val?
Oh, good.
And so, Councilman Del Santo, Councilwoman DePaolo. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
From the motioner first?
Uh, I, I think I spoke enough about it. I think it's a good tool that we should be doing to attract business into town. And if this is successful, I imagine places around it will be successful as well.
Yes, so I, I echo that, and I guess I'm just a little confused. So I'm just trying to figure out why we, a council member left the dais. Was there a conflict, or?
I, I'm not sure. She recused herself and stepped off the dais, Jack.
Okay. I just was just curious, because we saw a speaker, so I'm just a little confused right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussions? Okay, hearing none, would you please call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Perry?
Yes. Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.[1682.91]